We are now calling a city council meeting order. We would like that all work we have about it on this here tonight. At this time, I would like Minister Strickland, would you please give the indication, please?
That's right. I would thank you for this day, we thank you for the gathering tonight. We actually weren't enough of that while we praying that you will help us to handle the business of the city the way you see fit that it be pleasing unto you. And thank you for being so kind and merciful to them. Thank you for your sacrifice and for your son Jesus. We thank you for his atoning blood. In your son Jesus' name we pray. And I bow to the city, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Minister Strickland, for that indication. We want to have a lot of real crazy issues tonight. We're going to follow it as usual in the agenda tonight. On number one, unfinished business, we have our garbage rate. Oh, yeah, okay. I'd like for approval, minutes by last reading, all in favor? Yeah, the motion is second that we approve the minutes of our last reading, all in favor? Ah, I have it. Now, down unfinished business on our garbage rate in the outside of the mirror. We want, we like for most that we table it until we get to all the set for reading on it and the words of the rates.
I'm making motion that we table it until.
Yeah, the motion is second that we table the garbage rate until a later date or to get more understanding in the reading on it. Our next is our dumping trailer. Dumping trailer, I would like to ask the motion that we table it also, which wears out because we're not exactly big on the pricing still until our next meeting. The motion. The motion is second that we table our dumping trailer to our next meeting, uh, next meeting, council meeting, all in favor? I have it. Now, we're down to our new business. Our surplus five department, uh, twenty, twenty two, two oh four, F two fifty, uh, reanoma, yeah, it was on y'all chief. Let's see if I would ask for, uh, by Chief Derek Jones to explain that truck. If y'all have any question towards, you know, at this time, asking us to explain number one.
Yeah, this is a forward end, this is the fire department previous, this was a brush truck. Um, during that time, we could not put the unit on that truck. Uh, we had to do a bunch of suppression and everything to get it fit. Um, so we decided to put it as a rescue truck. Um, it does not fit the needs of the fire department anymore at this time. Uh, just to several other trucks I have. Yeah, um, I have a new brush truck now that this year, so I'm just asking the council to approve this of we can put the truck on surplus.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Jones? Yeah, I would attain a motion to approve this recommendation.
I second.
Yeah, the motion is second that we approve Chief Derek Jones' recommendation to put the truck on, uh, surplus, all in favor? Ah, I have it. Next, we have another item, returning to inventory by department, two thousand and four Chevrolet Tahoe. I would ask Chief Jones to explain that one too, if you got any question at this time, hold it with this team.
All right, but two thousand and four, four F one fifty was going to replace this two thousand and four Chevy Tahoe, but then, uh, something happened. So now we're asking that we bring that two thousand and four Chevy Tahoe back into service and take the, that's what they done said.
Yeah, I heard Chief Jones' recommendation, and if you want to have any questions? Do I obtain a motion to accept that two thousand and four Tahoe back in the service? Yeah, the motion is second that we attain, uh, that we put the two thousand and four Chevrolet Tahoe back in the service, all in favor? I have it, all opposed? Okay, back in the, thank you. Dumping for manufactured homes, uh, park, I would like to ask, so I still managed to explain it to all of us about that. Who will, who will, who will attain to hear what you have to say about it?
As you all know, the trailer park, the manufactured home park has sold. We don't have a way to pick up the rubbish and stuff that they have piled up. So what the mayor suggested is that we pay half of a rental from Ramsey to help them out since they're doing such a good job over there.
Yeah, like this, we talk like this, uh, discuss this like and about, um, possibly building past, you know, we wait up for y'all and if we gonna go ahead. Yes. With them, you know, kind of to help out, so.
Anyone else having questions?
Yeah. We gonna do what? Yeah, well, hey, that's a private place. Everybody, so they get dumped, but God will look at me.
Like when they clean, typically, when a property owner cleans up, we go around and pick up the trash. But we don't have a way to pick it up. And so that's, we did it a couple of weeks ago with the city trash. We went around and picked it up and then we got the dumpster and serviced, you know, used it as a service. But so this time, since they have such a big pile there and we don't have a means of picking it away, of picking it up, he's asking that we pay half because we can't provide the service that we usually provide.
And we, um, we've been, I guess, before my tenure, like dealing with the mobile home party, um, about the cleanup and about the things that were outside. And like she said, we have a new owner that has made tremendous progress down there on their own. And I suggest, I suggest that that's the least we can do since we've been worrying the previous owner before I came. So, um, I, I, I think that it's a good idea and.
Any more questions, any more questions? I, okay. I am impressed with the settlement too and both what they're doing. So I can see half cost, that cost three seventy-five, I can see paying that. So I like to obtain a motion that we, um, accept the recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second that we pay half cost, three, three hundred seventy-five of the Ramsey, uh, one time?
Just one time.
One time, all, all in favor? All opposed?
Counselman, what's your vote? I need your cap.
Ah.
Okay.
So now we down to account payable. Down to account payable, that chance to, uh, do the bills and payments, or any questions towards the bills? Or anything on the agenda that, or need concern about, need to address before call down, next time do it. If not, I like to obtain a motion that we, uh, approve those bills. Yeah, the motion is second that we pay the bills, all, all in favor? All opposed? I have it. So we're down to, uh, Police Department?
Mayor, Mayor, Council. Twenty twenty-three, as of today, we have approximately twenty cases reported. Uh, we have ten arrests, all from same fighting. We have four theft of property, one burglary case, one fraud case, two assault, four harassment, two possession drug case, one authorized abuse of business, and one criminal issue at this time.
You got a couple of questions. Uh, we approved the car at, at our last meeting, uh, meeting before that, uh, highest come happening very firmly, you know, maybe someone.
Yeah, it's, it's, as of last council, it should have two weeks to make two, uh, bill of shift. So once you get, you know, put the bill of shift, we'll get the necessary two, uh, equipment. So we looking at calling it, real of July.
Okay, one more question. Uh, next question is, uh, police officer that we all currently now having still.
Yes, sir.
Uh, keep your biggest home.
Yes, sir, uh, those two officers, uh, everybody looking well. Hopefully, the twentieth of July is that graduate week day, twentieth of July. Uh, we'll have, uh, for, for all we can say that.
So he's going, he's going, he's going where he's going in his school?
Yes.
Okay, and then we put it up to, oh.
We'll, we'll report.
Yeah, force down. Okay. Oh, yeah, not this, this, this question is Chief Jones, all the Chief Joneses. On our recruitment, recruiters, uh, by fire department, I hadn't heard about it lately, you know, when asked you to, uh, address. So we got people listening that was coming, is by our reading with our insurance, if you might, with the, uh, our fire stations. No, I mean, not fire hydrants, so. But y'all was paying and getting ready to adjust the insurance, waiting for the, uh, fire system.
Yeah, um, yes, we had ISO inspection come out today, um, they came a little earlier than expected. Uh, everything went great, he gave us some good news and a little bit of bad news, but, uh, it's gonna work out in our favor. Um, with the recruitment, um, you can put it up as much as you can, but that word volunteer, that what turns a lot of people around. Um, so you don't have, there's many people that want to come on, join the fire department, and once they here, get volunteer, and then you have to get up three, four o'clock in the morning, you know, to answer the call, so, so, um, the recruitment is, is my thing.
Even though, even though I saw, um, I've been saying that we are voting on to come say, uh, not, maybe not as much, is that happening? It's not, okay. All right, so there was some questions, some concerns that I would ask, and I, I look on just a minute to answer.
We have, I'm gonna go through our, my reports. So we have a total of thirty-six calls of this month. Um, twenty-one of those are ambulance calls alone. Four of those are accidents, and we had one structural fire, uh, neutral aid structural fire that we helped, then spark one, we had a wood fire and a gable fire, uh, this month. That's all calls made for this month.
Okay, anyone else have questions?
Like, do you see an interest in the, how?
Yes, there is. Not just as Allison, but as a county as a whole.
Yeah, another question. Uh, the pay at them will, will just be, they're, um, for the, uh, helicopter. Is that's on this spot when it comes in, that it's a, a lane?
So, uh, it depends on where we at, it's, it's about safety. Um, if, like I said, the police department or fire department, just depending on how many people are there at the time. Uh, we typically, uh, if it's close to a resident, if I can get it close to a resident, I'll land it close to a resident. Um, but if I don't have manpower, we'll use the armory or school or city hall or things like that, nation where it's open. And then some of it's, some of it's closed to where we can keep civilians out. Uh, so you have, you have to be, you have to have safety around landing the helicopter in areas. So, um, it's just a manpower, we don't have the manpower, our number one option is don't do, uh, natural bar on it.
Okay, just, thank you, there was a question I had written down, I had no answer to, but I knew you, I would be, yes, I want to ask. When I had to listen, um. State Department?
Good afternoon, everyone. Just want to let councilmen, everyone know that today is a great day, we received two trucks today. With the worry free on, no cost to the city, other than one we got to do a little work on. See that, that you know how to get God, even God, whatever, maybe going on. And also, the traffic light up time, four hundred and forty votes. We have nothing to deal with that four hundred and forty votes, but the proper people have been called in order to fix it.
That's the main traffic light, dude.
Right up the main car wash.
Trucks is already here?
Yeah.
Okay. Listen, 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 this is one of us out in operation. Yeah, we'll be.
As soon as we get the rest of the paperwork in, we'll tell you.
What about, um, oh my goodness, when to say all these for the, um, surplus items that we cared to touch the lips? I had to have it already.
They haven't had it yet, we, I was over there today and I got to go back tomorrow to take some other items. And he said they getting prepared for a big sale next month.
So how many ice we, we have over there?
Everything that you put on the surplus is done.
We have the truck, dump truck, I mean, how many numbers?
Dump truck, garbage truck.
Garbage truck, I mean.
Garbage truck, pickup truck, it was a, uh, some old bush hogs and a little old small tractor.
But to say I think it's, and it's coming up.
Next, next month?
Say that next month. Anyone else having questions? Uh, another issue, uh, it's, with a big problem, I had been talking with my car, uh, I see the manager about the, uh, Alvin Road. Yeah, it's cut, it looks good, and it's, they flee with everything, but it is in a way, it's, we're cut to that area yesterday to get the trash up, uh, down to that road, you know, cause there's so much going on down there right now. I don't know, you know, he cut the side, it is, that's all good. He finishes up today and in front of both houses, all this, this good. Just so much trash, you know, where you couldn't see it till the car was broke it up, red, it's the rear, so that's good. But there's so much, we have, you know, so much trash down. Twenty-two, get that, uh, tomorrow, but they clean that road, no, that road went after we, I, I, I don't know. Yeah, uh, there was issue that was borrowed to me from our housing, so I just pass it on. Your thing, everything done, uh, city manager, that we, we done on it, it's good, we're pleased. Yes, you said thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we done, fire day, they get done?
Hey, one more thing, our, uh, siren blew down, um, about two months, uh, we didn't know about it until we went to go test it and found out that it was not working. We did contact, um, the people that come fixing it, it's an open operation. Myself and Chief Jones has a hand there really, where we can set it off, um, good job, ready, from our radio, so that way we don't have to go down to the office and whatnot, so he can be at home and I can be at home and we can set it off. But I'll admit, him has that capability, so it is operational.
I got a question. Uh, so, so how do you, what, what determines, or how do you determine, you know, when, you know, when to press the button, you know, say?
Who we going? Yeah, um, this, I see our chamber and our museum, but I would like to ask our city manager, they will, uh, that I didn't know, my ex, uh, get, is one of the mayor said thing that we could address on the chamber or the museum tonight?
I don't have any updates.
Any updates, yeah. Yeah, we got to go to the, to audit any, any, uh, opinions tonight, and the one that already have anything they like to ask councilman tonight? If you're free to, so this time.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I had my opportunity to go into this storm shelter today. It was quite an experience because the first time I've ever been in one. However, if a person is coming from a storm, the last thing we need to do is for it to be full of spider web, uh, dust and everything in there. I am willing to volunteer to clean it myself because if I know about money from a storm, I don't want to sit on this spider.
Thank you for, uh, we're letting you take care of that. Yeah, all right, yeah. Yes, ma'am, appreciate it, uh, by chief, it's just, it's, it's more like we're pleased with it, either, either how, they detect, ready to go for us. I noticed nobody know what's up, so I add it now, okay.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good, good.
I'm here related to the incident that happened in concession stand in Richland before the city council because that's who we got. You know, we got, and, uh, the officer that came out, to me, it looked like it was an inside jar. Because whoever, whoever went in had a key, it wasn't broken. And why I say that is because the front entrance of the concession stand, the gate that shut up and it's got a steel bar with a plate across it. When we got there, half of the plate was broke. We don't know where the other piece of stick went, but it wasn't there, but it was broke. You can't, the gate wasn't broke, the steel bar wasn't ranch, you know, had stuff coming through, it was. So whoever did it, went in, broke that, to look like it was someone coming in through that gate. So, um, have the, have the, the police, they've been down there already, uh, they've done, uh, did they do, uh, fingerprinting and all the that right there? So I'm sure they probably going to have some information on that, uh, to give to you.
Yeah, I got the report today.
Okay.
Which is saying it had pictures and fingerprints taken, but I had heard it, it's damn fine, and I, that's what I'm, 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 I'm.
Well, we got the chief and, and we, we'll address that issue with you, um.
How much they had get?
Everything.
So what would you say, how much, how much is value?
The value of it, I can't say because it was so much, when we buy, we buy enough to last. And we was coming up, we had ball creeping because the, they was gonna have a tournament that following week. But they postponed, so we, I didn't never get nothing out because when you postpone, that mean it gonna happen sooner.
Right.
So then they said it was gonna happen again, which they postponed it again. So, uh, the following week that, uh, that they was gonna have, me and my niece, which in it with me, we said, let's go down there and see do we need to get anything else, you know, because a big tournament, we expecting a lot of people. Who were there, every, the soda, refrigerator's full, under that thing was full of soda, Gatorade, uh, candy, chips, it was full up there. I mean, they didn't leave anything, even they opened a paper jar and give, I guess they had tied nothing, you know, because he took fingerprints of that as well. It was wide open, that's the only something they left.
Oh, you don't know who had a key?
It, obviously, we did.
Well, we'll say, y'all supposed to know.
Well, I had a key.
Smart.
I'm the only one had the key besides me and my niece, but I don't know who else had a key.
But they're being a city property, so they go in on, that we close down the chair, if they.
Well, it depends on how, what the value is, we have a deductible.
Right.
To pay, so if it's less than a deductible, and I don't think it's renters. I, I think it's for the facility, but not for renters, I have to check on that.
They on city property, what I'm saying, you, you come up with a business, and I would, I propose to them.
The business is on, is already on the post.
Right, well, I'm saying, you come out, yeah, I'm, I'm saying about twenty-eight, uh, too bad, but you come back to us, I would propose it. You give that, I'll get that one up, I'm proposing, trying to reverse you.
Well, you, you gotta, uh, you gotta, you can't put the, the, the cart before the horse. Uh, we got police that you put in order, uh, and they done their.
Always always say that, they say it's inside a job property, that's what she said, I don't know, I talked to Chief Jones yet.
That's right, you haven't talked to him, so.
I'm just saying.
You need to let the police do their job first, and then we'll see what we go from there, you know, I mean, so if they haven't talked to her yet, then chief is here, I'm sure he's a capable man, and he been here for a while, that you talk to her about the situation. So, I mean, don't, don't flip the cart before the horse.
I'm gonna put the cart before the horse tonight, okay? Well, it's gonna be a few, but you go on the line, okay?
All right.
Oh, 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 let me talk back, come here. You, you go, yes and no, when I put it down on, on that gym, you go, yes and no?
Right.
And just leave it at that? It feel like, it feel like, it feel like it's, it's on city property, and we get, so our stuff should be secured on city property. Ain't get secured on city property, they try to break it, ain't like to break it, so it is what it is, so I just say.
When you get down, somebody over there will let you?
No, it was already open. It was open, the door was open. And, and you know, me, myself, I hate to be in this position because I don't like this position. But I bought this stuff with my own money, you know, I need money, I don't have, you know, trying to make money and then somebody go and take it.
Right.
You know, like it's there, you know, I could see, you know, my niece, I'm just gonna tell you, every time we doing that, she said, look like something is missing. This is the truth, and you know what I say, girl, we probably sold it. But she probably was telling the truth because one time something was missing, and we called the man. Well, he did, refund us that.
Right.
So obviously, they probably have been getting it all along, but me, don't like mess, I just let it slide, I said, girl, we probably sold that somewhere. You know, it's so busy, so, but now I believe it, because now they really went in and took it all. They say you let something go so long, it, it'll happen.
Right.
Well, we, we thank you for, uh, coming in and, and stating, you know.
The foundation, foundation of the business.
Um, and we thank you, and, and chief is gonna be with you and, uh, rectify the situation, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Can I come to on that, on that situation? As a business owner, you don't have receipts and for inventory of everything they took? Each time that someone took something, you don't do inventory? You don't have your receipt that you bought all your products and everything, they have something to work with?
Well, really, ma'am, I didn't call it a business, it was just a concession stand, making, trying to earn a little money, you know.
But it is, it is because your money was spent, and you need to always have something to bank you up.
Well, babe, I got plenty of receipts.
Okay, that's.
I have plenty of receipts of stuff, right, I have the receipts, if you want to see them.
Okay, well, you don't have to produce any receipts to anybody to her.
But I do have.
We thank you for your coming also, uh, so we, we moving on?
Well, we ready to, um, anyone else? Okay, now we go to our council, uh, Councilman?
It's key, hope alive, babe.
Councilman Chris? Councilman?
I just want to say, uh, on behalf of the mayor and council.
I just want to say, uh, on behalf of the mayor and council, uh, that we are truly saying, uh, after that, of fellow officer, and we ask you to keep your family in your prayers, and, uh, if there's anything that we can do, uh, to share, uh, let us know.
Again, I got a question for, concerning that, that is all I have, this is, I, this is, this is a legal that we could do tonight, I could ask Marlon to do a prayer for the family, and we'll do it live here?
You can do it.
Okay, I would, I would, I would ask, um, Minister Jones, if you will, do a prayer for the, uh, for the family tonight, on behalf of the CEO, Addison, and, and the board, and council.
Love spray, Paul, we thank you tonight, we thank you for everything that's turned about in our lives, and thank you for this council meeting over tonight, thank you for everybody that came out tonight, we ask you for your continued blessing on each one of our individual collective tonight, not only we ask you again, for your continued blessings, and your uplifting hands on this, uh, bereaved family tonight. Not only this, that family, but the whole entire long family, we ask you, uh, that you just continue to be with us, we ask that you just get your glory out of this situation, and, uh, when you get your glory out of it, then you bring glory, not only this, you do to your whole kings, your daughters, and we ask that you would, uh, help us, and we would continue to lean, depend on you with time, with we end with that, so you would have your prayer.
Thank you, Chief, if there's nothing else, I would like to attain a motion to adjourn.
Your motion.
The motion is saying that we adjourn, if there's any more for comment, all in favor?
Aye.
I have it, sir.